We have a roll call for a joint for housing and council.
Okay, we ready? Oh, okay, I didn't see that. Okay, so I will hereby call the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority to order. Roll call for city council, please.
Councilmember Asadurian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kassakian.
Here.
Najarian. And Mayor Brotman.
Here.
And roll call for housing, please.
Attorney member Aginian. Asadurian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Kassakian.
Here.
Perazian.
Here.
Chair Najarian. And Vice Chair Devine.
Here.
And may we have your report, please?
Chair, the agenda for the Tuesday, June 6, 2023, joint public meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on Wednesday, May 31, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and our first item?
One is community development regarding Harower Village First Implementation Agreement to Affordable Housing Agreement Providing Additional Funding. A Housing Authority Resolution of Appropriation in the Amount of $1,215,372 for additional funding of Harower Village at 920 East Broadway. B Housing Authority Motion to Authorize the Executive Director to Execute an Implementation Agreement and Related Documents.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council, Vice Chair Devine, members of the Housing Authority. Harower Village, as you know, is the 40-unit affordable housing project that's currently under construction located on, at 920 East Broadway. And the developer of this project has requested 1.5 million in additional funding. However, staff is recommending approval of $1,215,372 in additional funding that would meet all of the criteria and the reasons why the developer is asking for this kind of funding, with the exception of a lesser amount for developer fees. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike Fortney to provide you some additional detail and response, details and respond to your questions.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, City Council, and Vice Chair Devine and Housing Authority Board. I'm Mike Fortney, Principal Housing Project Manager for the city. First off, Harower Village at 920 East Broadway, again, 40-unit affordable project for seniors, well in construction now. We are looking at substantial completion at the end of January 2024 for that project, so it's moving along. Yeah, the developer came to us asking for an additional one and a half million dollars. This project closed its financing right as the interest rates started to go really crazy and construction costs were going up. There was also the issue with insurance, particularly on this project because it's a historic complex. So all these costs were going up. There just wasn't enough time to get before you, before we, we had to hit this deadline for closing of construction, financing. So what the developer did instead was value engineered the project and deferred roughly $650,000 worth of their fee in order to make the closing. So now that we've gotten past all that, we're going back to you. Again, the developers asked for one and a half million. Staff's recommendation is to fund just over 1.2 million. And then above, the developer is going to seek some of that developer fee that they've had to either defer or contribute to the project through the state's AHP program. So they're in the process of doing that, so. So the 1.2 million dollars would bring back the photovoltaic system that's going to be installed on the roof, a really nice trellis for the courtyard. There's really no shade in the, in the property for a while because, you know, the trees that are going to be planting. There's no trees there currently, so that trellis is a really nice feature. And then some upgrades to interior finishes. It'll also restore some of the contingencies that we have. We have, we lowered our contingencies both on the new construction element of the project as well as the adaptive reuse parts of the project. So we want to bring those back because we've, we're probably at zero on our contingency budget right now. We've, you know, when you start opening up walls, that's when you really find out what you, what you're dealing with, so. So that's, that's recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Okay, do my colleagues have any questions?
In accordance with the additional funding for 1.5 million, what they're asking for, will the rents going, going high, go up?
Will the?
The rents?
No, 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 the rents will not be affected.
Okay.
They are, they are set.
Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Devine?
Couple of questions. The solar is still going to be put in, correct?
It is now.
That's not being taken out?
Yeah, with, with approval of this, yes, it'll go back in.
Great, great. And when do we expect the, can we expect the AHP funds if they are going to get them or not?
Developers here, do you have an anticipated date for an award of AHP?
Well, they should come up with, yeah, come up to the podium, please.
We just, we're going through threshold review. Currently, we expect news within the next 60 days.
Good. Are you optimistic?
Typically, going through the threshold review, it's a good sign.
Good, okay. Great, great. Those are my questions, but I also want to make a comment and a, I have a concern about us using historic resources as, for adaptive reuse. And it seems that the, the cost is, is exorbitant as compared to regular, just using a property. So I just want to make sure that in the future that we take into consideration the fact that a resource is being considered and the price might be a lot higher.
It is an excellent point. I've cautioned council, adaptive reuse is always more expensive than ground-up construction. When you add the historic preservation element to it, too, it just adds to the cost. So we're looking at almost 300,000 a unit out at Harower, whereas our average is about 140,000. I did calculate the per-unit subsidy on all 507 units that are in construction now. And we're still below our 140 average. We're at about 130 now. So Pioneer and Citrus are helping us out on our overall average, but it's an absolutely valid point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kassakian, Councilmember Asadurian? Okay, just, just want to clarify a couple of things. So we're not obligated to, to support this additional funding, correct?
You're not obligated, no.
And if we don't, then what that means is what? Can you just walk through what the implications would be?
Right, we would not have the photovoltaic system on the roof.
Yeah.
Nor the trellis, nor would we, we would have the lesser quality finishes that we're looking at now versus what we had originally envisioned when we had the project. And then we're running a real risk with some of our contingencies because, as I've said, we're at zero really on our contingencies, on our contingency budgets for both the new construction as well as adaptive reuse. So that puts that at risk. The developer, again, deferred 650,000 or contributed. Total gave up 650,000 on their fee, half of which was deferred, half of it is just being contributed. So that, that puts the developer on, under further pressure to deliver the project, even in its, even in the version that it's in now. That, that, that's, that's what would happen without additional 1.2 million.
Okay, so for 1.2 million we're getting, how much of it is, is, are we getting kind of these, you know, reversing the, the value engineering? And how much of it is the contingency? Do you have that breakdown?
Yeah, I do. The contingency alone is $480,000. Insurance was 224,000. The photovoltaic system I have as a number on this, 294,000. I don't think that's a very reliable number. We're still getting, we're still getting bids on that, but roughly $300,000. We're not talking about their developer fee, which is, they were asking for 323,000. So that's not part of the 1.2 that I'm recommending. But that's, that's as much as I've gotten and broken down.
Okay, okay.
Because we're, we're, we're looking at, in concept. Part of the reason why I didn't put a PowerPoint together because I didn't want to show you what the finishes are going to be because today I can't tell you exactly what they are. We're shopping that. But getting it in the range and knowing what, what materials we want to go with versus what we value engineered, we will have the better quality. But I don't have a breakdown of exactly what that dollar amount looks like. But that, that's as much of a breakdown.
Okay, okay. And then on the insurance, could you just explain that? Because when I read in the report, it, it, you know, it talked about the insurance going up like multiple times. And there was a reference to, you know, the adaptive reuse, but none of that is new. So, so what, what's really happening with the insurance?
Yeah, and I may, and I may ask the developer to come up and explain that some, to some degree, further than what I can do. But I haven't, I mean, wow, you do a Google search on insurance. The state of insurance in California right now, the industry is in a mess. And it's not just builder's risk, it's just about everything. Insurance companies pulling out of the state because of all the losses they've taken from covering fire, covering flood, the whole thing. So, yeah, it, to me, it looks like the insurance industry is really in turmoil right now, at least in California. And then in this particular project, because of the historic campus, you're right, it was a historic campus from the beginning. So I think maybe the developer can come up and try to describe exactly what that, what that looked like from going up and up and up. This is Ross Young with the Boat Communities.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Yeah, as, as was outlined in the staff report, we got pricing, I think at the onset of the project, at around 100,000 for builder's risk. And then it was up to 200,000 about two months before closing. And then at closing, it was 580,000. It was shocking. Actually, procuring that insurance was taking so long and it was so difficult, we almost missed our closing deadline because of the insurance alone. And there's, there's something like six different carriers on this project with tranches of coverage because no single carrier wanted to, wanted to pick it up and take the risk on alone. So that's part of the reason why it's so expensive. It's a 100-year-old building, it's unreinforced masonry, there's just a lot of risk involved. The other thing is non-project-specific issues affecting the industry. Water intrusion claims, theft, wildfire, all of that is affecting the industry. And that's why you're seeing those premiums go higher as well.
And this is insurance for what? You said builder's risk. What does, what does that mean?
It's basically our insurance during the course of construction. If something were to happen to the property and all that was expended from our construction loan.
Okay, and, and how about, you know, the ongoing insurance once the, once the construction is completed?
It's much lower. It's something like 30,000 per year.
Okay. All right, that, thank you for that explanation. All right.
I would have though, if I could. The ongoing insurance, those rates have been going up too. We've been seeing that in products in our portfolio. So that, that, that is also going up, though not anywhere near as badly as this, with builder's risk.
Right, right. Okay, so, all right, thank you very much. And we have, is it just two housing authority actions or is there a council action?
Two housing.
Okay, so then I'll turn it over to our.
Entertain a motion for, I can do one and two, we can do one and two together.
That's correct.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Attorney member Aginian. Asadurian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kassakian.
Yes.
Perazian.
Yes.
Chair Najarian and Vice Chair Devine.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, what is next?
Item two, Community Service in Parks Regarding Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Proposed Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Emergency Solution Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership Act Home Programs. A Council Resolution Adopting an Environmental Negative Declaration. B Council Motion to Approve a Fiscal Year, Fiscal Year 2023-24 CDBG, ESG, and Home Annual Action Plan totaling $3,623,358. Authorize Submission of the Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. The Glendale Homeless Continuum of Care Board and Staff and authorize the City Manager or a designee to redirect excess canceled or unused program funds under 50,000 from one project to another with CDBG Advisory Committee approval. C Housing Authority Motion to Approve Fiscal Year 2023-2024 CDBG, ESG, and Home Annual Action Plan totaling $3,623,358 and authorize submission of the Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee, the Glendale Homeless Continuum of Care Board and Staff.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Brotman, Vice Chair Devine will just go directly to Maggie Kavarian, our Community Services Super Manager, to walk you through the details of this proposed final annual action plan.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. We have a very short PowerPoint here for you to walk you through the final CDBG, ESG, and Home Annual Action Plan for 2023-24. In this year, we are anticipating $3.6 million from HUD in our three programs that support the low-income individuals and households. That is Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, at 1.7 million. Emergency Solutions Grant, which is a homeless services program, at 152,000. And then the Home Partnership Program at 1.5 million. The 1.5 million also includes 130,000 in program income for the home program. So we kicked off the annual action plan season in September of 2022 with a open house. We invited all the nonprofits in the greater Glendale area to come and learn about how to apply for CDBG funding. We invited over 99 nonprofits. We had 12 agencies show up. We also conducted a needs assessment in September. This included a survey, data analysis, and a community meeting trying to get comments from our residents to see what they felt what were program priorities and how this money could be well-spent. And then we presented the findings to our CDBG Advisory Committee and then to our City Council and Housing Authority in November with those findings. And we issued an RFP to community agencies in November, invited them to a technical support meeting, and they submitted their proposals at the end of December. We reconvened in March with the CDBG Advisory Committee, two days of interviews with nonprofits. And they made their funding recommendations. In April, we met with the community again, asked residents what their commentary was on those funding recommendations that were made by the CDBG Advisory Committee. And now we, we come before you today to approve the final plan. So to break down the CDBG allocation funding plan for 2023-24, we break it down into three parts. We have public social services. There is a 15% cap on public social services. So there's about $264,000 to make recommendations on. And then with capital improvement, that's 65% of the funding, which is 1.1 million. And then lastly, program administration at 350, a little under 353,000. So this year, we had 12 community agencies submit proposals to us for public social services. 10 were recommended for funding, 2 were not. They were Armenian Cultural Association, Hamaskayin, and Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America. Then what we, what we also wanted to present to the council and the housing authority today were what were the types of public social services that were recommended? So 46% were homeless programs, homeless services and programs. 34% constituted adult and senior counseling and case management. And then 20% were youth programs, youth employment, youth group counseling. So that's the breakdown of the funding recommendations. If you notice, we had $752,000 in requests and only $264,000 to fund. So we were short almost half a million dollars. In red is the difference. The agencies that were funded, the 10 agencies that were funded between, they didn't receive any full, not, no agency received full funding. It was either 20% to 75% less than they had requested. And then I'll move on to capital improvement projects. We had five submissions for capital improvement from our community agencies. Four were funded with program funds for 2023-24. And then one agency was funded with previous funds that we had come back, we had come here in April 4, I believe, to the council and housing authority to approve the YMCA of Glendale using previous fiscal year funding. So all five community agencies did receive funding. And then we had one city CIP project, which is the Pacific Natural Grass Project that received $667,000 in funding. Or I should say was recommended, 667,000. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the ESG program. ESG follows a very similar timeline as CDBG. They have a two-year funding plan. And their continuum of care actually makes those funding recommendations for them. So they were reviewed and approved by the COC Board. And then they look at outcomes and performance measures so they can receive funding again for the second year. So the ESG allocation funding plan, the 152,000 is broken down into four agencies. Catholic Charities, YWCA, Essencia, and Home Again Los Angeles, formerly Family Promises of the Verdugos. If you notice, there has been a decrease in two of the agencies. There were $48,000 decrease in YWCA and a little under $10,000 in Essencia. But they also received HAP funding, homeless housing assistance and prevention dollars, and 50, $50,000 from that. So Essencia and the Y both received funding for that to make up the difference. And then lastly, we have the home program. The 2023-2024 home program funds are always going to be allocated to future home projects to develop affordable housing. If you look, we wanted to highlight three projects that home funds have been used for. Mr. Fortney had just mentioned Harower Village. $1.8 million has been dedicated to Harower, Harower Village through home funds. Citrus Crossing, also $1.8 million dedicated. And then 515 Pioneer, $2 million in home funds. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions on the annual action plan. We also have with us the Chair of our CDBG Advisory Committee, Ms. Anita Quinones Gabrielian is here, as well as our Vice Chair, Mr. Armita Avadiscian is here.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Asadurian?
I'm going to start off with the Armenian Bar Association. What exactly do they need the funding for? And the reason that I ask this is because many moons ago, when I was the ED at ANCA Glendale, we used to partner with the Armenian Bar Association and Neighborhood Legal Services for pro bono legal clinics, which we then called the Glendale Free Legal Clinics. That program had a zero budget and had a, you know, every time we hosted it, there was like at-capacity at the Glendale Youth Center. So can you explain what their, yeah?
Absolutely, Councilmember Asadurian. The Armenian Bar Association is providing pro bono legal services. And they are holding their services actually at the Adult Recreation Center at 201 East Colorado, where our community center is housed. We have a lot of senior services requests that come in through there, as well as expungement clinic requests. We have requests for housing issues. We have fair housing questions for them. It runs the gamut. We even had assistance through, I think we had one client that had divorce settlement issues. So they, it runs the gamut. They do everything out of the Adult Recreation Center. It's all free. They have one legal aid that assists. And then they have attorneys on staff that file cases if it gets to that point. But most of the time, it's mediation and then filing of cases.
So this, this fund is going to cover that legal aid?
The legal aid and part of the lawyer's fees.
Okay, and then on Essencia, I know that it marks like for outreach program. Can you walk me through how that's different from the funds that we provide to Essencia through other means and other ways that we've been, I know it's come here and we've approved that funding. And so I'm trying to understand why we're now doing it through here when there are other organizations that need additional funding.
So I, I will answer that as well. I can answer the CDBG question for you. And I believe my colleague is here to answer the other question that you had that, of what other services Essencia is providing. So through CDBG funds, we are helping to pay for an homeless outreach coordinator. It's homeless prevention and homeless outreach, basically. So that individual who works for Essencia goes out into the Glendale community specifically and tries to engage with homeless individuals and tries to get them to process their paperwork, tries to get them housing, and all their needs met through this service. I can invite, Mr. Balunikan is here. So I can invite Mr. Balunikan up here to discuss the other aspects of Essencia's services.
Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, Councilmembers and Housing Authority. Excuse me, Essencia has a number of funding sources. We fund a number of programs. There are coordinated entry system, a chunk of funds that come through our NOFA that was approved by the City Council last week. So we fund their coordinated entry system, their emergency shelter, as well as outreach. CDBG funds is used for outreach. I believe 50% of the outreach worker that operates in Glendale on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, 7 to 4, is paid out of this fund. The ESG funds that we allocate are for the Rapid Rehousing Program. And then the HHAP funds that we've allocated through the COC Board will be paying for their resident associates and their expanded outreach program.
Are we just doing questions now?
You're good?
Are we just doing questions now?
You could, everything, everything.
I mean, I, I'd like to see, so I understand that there were two commissioners that were looking to support Hamaskayin between 10 to 20K. And then the Armenian Engineers and Scientists had noted that they have different sources of funding available that they can go to. So they kind of took that step back, is what I was told. But if there's a palette from my colleagues to discuss that during deliberations, I'd like to see it. I recognize the Armenian Bar Association's involvement with the Adult Recreation Center. I'm not sure if that previous clinic still exists, but from time to time, I've seen flyers for it across the region, not just in Glendale because that program then ended up kind of becoming something that we were expanding to the valley and so forth. So I think I'm just going to kind of leave it there and then I want to hear what my colleagues have to say about that.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Devine, any comments? Councilmember Kassakian, anything?
No, I'm fine.
Housing Authority Member Perazian, no? Okay. My, you know, my only comment is, it just doesn't thrill me to see us putting a lot of money into these parking lots, you know? I don't know, it doesn't fit with the idea of addressing blight to be spending, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars resurfacing parking lots. And, I mean, I know that's what they've asked for. Let me first ask one question because I noticed the one, the Home Minute Men are parking lots. So we gave them 550,000, 555,000 last year, is that right?
We did not.
I see that. It says current funding, 2022-2023 current funding. And then it has another 247 that's being requested. Seems like a lot for a parking lot.
The parking lot is 200, let me just go back. So for Home Minute Men, it's 247,500. They're currently funded 555,000, but those are different program years. So it's not a lump sum of, it's a lump sum of 555,000, but those are different projects that they have with us. They have four different projects with us.
Oh, that's not for the parking lot?
No, it is not. The parking lot is. The parking lot is 247,500 that they've been funded for 2324, really been recommended for 2324.
Okay, that's a little better. But yeah, I, you know, 400, almost 500, almost half a million dollars, 2340, oh no, less than that, around 400,000 for parking.
Let's ask about the parking lot, are you talking about the one parking lot behind Arat, or are you also talking about the parking lot to the right as you're looking at it?
I believe it's both.
Well, because that's a big space, that's huge, that's huge.
Yeah. I mean, at the very least, I'd like to see us, you know, have them use a light pavement surface to, to address the heating, because the black asphalt can be really just horrendously hot. And these are, well, at least in them, it's a dense area. I know that's not actually technically inside Glendale, but regardless, it's a dense area.
Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority, we actually reached out to both Home Management Men as well as Neighborhood Legal Services. Home Management Men was not able to join us today, but they did offer a statement. They said that we would like to study the suggestion that the mayor has, and if it is cost-effective and within the budget, and if it helps the environment, we are more than happy to consider it. So it'll depend on the budget. I also have the Executive Director of Neighborhood Legal Services here, Ms. Yvonne Maria Jimenez. If you'd like to ask her some questions about the Neighborhood Legal Services parking lot project, I'm sure she'll be able to give you more insight.
Okay. Yeah, that's a smaller space.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council and the Housing Authority. Very appreciative of the recommendation that's been made. The parking lot, it will be a whole improvement, not just repaving, it's an improvement. The parking lot is shared with the community, with the neighborhood. It's open in the evenings and on weekends. There's a lot of parking congestion in the area, so that parking lot is very full on weekends and on the evenings, because the residents use it. During business hours, Monday through Friday, it would be reserved for clients visiting the office, the staff of the organization. We have looked at cool surfacing, I did talk to the architects about that. It's a budget question. We do embrace the idea of using new technology to deal with extreme heat, and the costs will vary between 22,000 to 45,000, depending on the technology or the materials used. On the affordable end, those materials will fade over time quite quickly and would have to be redone. On the higher end, they'll endure much longer. But that's what we, what my architect told me about, we could look into those options. It would be a cost, an increase to the budget.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, please.
My question is, would 120 cover that higher cost?
No, the entire project is coming in at over 300,000. So we're, we're leveraging private donations to cover the other portion of the cost. The grant that we're recommended for will cover about 64% of the project. So we're raising funds to cover the remainder. We have funds set aside that are unrestricted donated funds.
So that, that kind of makes that 300,000 for Home Management Men with the amount of area that they have seem like it's not much. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just.
Yeah. I, I don't know, I would, I would certainly like to see us, you know, lean into this, this issue, because we, you know, we read all the time, this city is going to be difficult to live in, right? And everything we can do to kind of deal with this extreme heat situation ahead of time we should do.
That's right. No, we support it and we embrace it. I think it is very necessary, especially in low-income areas, where green space is, is not as extensive as it is in higher-income areas. So we embrace the notion, and we'll look at that. But no, I support it.
Okay. Or, you know, plantings around parking lots are another way to get, you know, that may be cheaper, I don't know. It may take up.
It's included in the, it's included in the project, so there is green space.
There is, okay.
That entire area does not have the parking lot and surrounding area. The curb, there are trees that were planted by the city on both sides of the street, which is really lovely. But we do want to include greenery around the project, and it's included in the budget.
That's one of the questions I was going to ask, is whether there's going to be anything to spruce up of the space? Because it's, I know the space next to or adjacent to Arts Bakery, I know the area very, very well. I do my weekly coffees at Adam's Hill Mini Park. And right now, it's just a blacktop surface. So if you're going to add greenery and make it at least seem less like a just basic parking lot, that's fine. I mean, regardless, it would be, I would be supportive of it, because I do see how much use that parking lot receives. But while we have you here, I do have to ask, how much longer will the city potentially have our library space before Neighborhood Legal Services expands into it?
We're committed to it. We're committed. It's, it's really been a huge improvement for the community, having the library there. I embrace it and support it, as long as I'm Executive Director, will continue to support that. I don't see us using that space or, or wanting to reclaim it anytime soon. I think we extended the lease by five years last year.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right. So I think, did you have another comment?
And by the way, you've done a great job of preserving that building, which is an Art Deco, wonderful building for South Glendale, thank you.
Very proud of it.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay to go forward. I would like to, to make the request, both, you know, to you and to the Home Management Men, Arat, to, you know, look for opportunities to either use a cooler surface or, or do more planting. I know you, you could, you know, you potentially lose some parking spots, but it may be, it may be worth it. You know, you go into these open parking lots, and everybody's trying to find that one tree, right, and park under it. So it's smart if we can, if we can do more of that.
The project proposal has greenery in it. We have a drawing that was submitted, so there are trees and, and other green space.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not as familiar, I know I've been to the Home Management Men area, but I'm not as familiar with the parking lot there to know what we're dealing with. Yeah, it's big. I don't know how, like, whether there's any greenery around there or anything. Okay, Councilmember Satrian?
Mayor Brotman, I think, you know, maybe even addressing our city manager, if there's ways that perhaps our staff can share some resources for this with Home Management Men and Neighborhood Legal Services of, you know, here are some companies that do this, here are some materials that could be used. I don't know if it's possible, but if we have it handy, and it's not going to be extra work for our staff to share the possibilities, I would.
Yeah, I mean, we've been piloting, we've been piloting some, so we have some knowledge we can share.
I'm not looking for them to do a report or become like a consultant for the projects, just sharing whatever we have.
Yeah, most definitely, we can do that. Councilmember Satrian, as the mayor mentioned, we have two locations that we have tried pilot programs with different kinds of surface material. Can share the details and the results of that, those two pilot studies.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Devine?
Yeah, just before we do the motions, I just want to thank CDBG Committee. I know it's not easy to make these decisions, and I'm sure it can get a little bit testy at times. I know you spend a lot of time, not just meeting, but going out into the community and visiting these programs, and that, I appreciate all the work that you put in. Thank you very much.
Oh, and I would like to echo that, and I, Anita Quinones Gabrielian is here, Armita Gavadisian is here, yeah, thank you to the two of you and to the rest of the committee. I know you do put in a lot of time. And I could mention that I'm in the market for another person for the CDB Commission, because my appointed commissioner unfortunately has termed out. I would love him to stay on, and I know he would love to stay on, but it just can't happen. So if anybody's watching, if anybody's listening and knows of people, let me know. Thank you. Any other comments or a motion? Oh, so there's two councilmen, two A and B? Can you move to A and B? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second for two A and B. Roll call, please, thank you.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
And Mayor Brotman?
Yes.
And for housing, two C, number three.
I'll move to, I'll move to C.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Authority Member Arginin?
Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
Chair Najarian and Vice Chair Devine?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our next, last and final item?
Three would be community development regarding appropriation of $3,697,671 in permanent local housing allocation, funding for a portion of the acquisition costs for 426 Piedmont Avenue and for administrative costs. Three, eight, council resolution of appropriation in the amount of $3,697,671 for a portion of the acquisition costs for 426 Piedmont Avenue and for administrative costs.
Thank you. City Manager Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council, Vice Chair Devine, members of the Housing Authority. I'm just going to go directly to Pam Jackson, our Housing Coordinator, to provide the details of this request for appropriation of funding to go towards the purchase of the senior affordable housing development at 426 Piedmont Avenue.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, Housing Authority Vice Chair Devine, members of the City Council and Housing Authority. I'm here to seek your approval of a resolution of appropriation of PLHA funds to pay for a portion of the acquisition costs of 426 Piedmont Avenue and for administrative costs. In November of last year, you directed staff to submit an application for permanent local housing allocation funds, or PLHA funds, to the state of California. This fund was established by the state in 2019 as a new dedicated revenue source of funds for affordable housing. Glendale is considered an entitlement city under the program, so we don't have to compete for funds, and we expect to receive an ongoing yearly allocation. However, the state did require us to submit an application to receive the funds, along with a five-year plan for use of funds. With your approval, we submitted an application in November of 2022 with the plan to use the first five years of funding toward the acquisition and development of Piedmont, a site that we acquired in August of 2022. Since PLHA funding was not available at the time that we acquired the site, we used a combination of measureless funds and low and moderate housing asset, I'm sorry, low and moderate income housing asset funds to complete the acquisition. Our low and moderate income housing asset fund no longer receives annual allocations due to the dissolution of redevelopment agencies back in 2012. This is a flexible fund that we use for a variety of administrative costs, as well as to maintain affordability at our Doran Gardens homeownership project. In April of this year, the state approved our PLHA application and five-year plan, and with that approval, we were, we were authorized to receive the first three years of funds in the amount of $3,697,671. So with your approval of this requested resolution of appropriation, and in conjunction with our approved five-year plan, we will use 95% of this amount toward the acquisition of Piedmont and the remaining 5% toward administrative costs. So if I can take any questions you may have?
Sure, thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions?
No.
No questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for, let's see, it's just a council resolution that we need. Move the council resolution, and a second?
A second.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian? And Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And what is next? Adjournment, is that right?
Adjournment, correct.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Counsel?
For, oh, that's right. Motion to adjourn for counsel, please.
I'll move.
And second?
I'll second.
Okay, counsel is adjourned.
And motion for adjournment for housing?
I'll move.
Second.
Housing is adjourned, 351, thank you.